I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule and establish a quorum?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at sacmitrcable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 27th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Great, thank you. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. I do have an announcement to make before I make more general announcements. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and centers for disease control and prevention, this meeting will be streamed live and will be closed to the public. Those wishing to view the meeting can do so at the Metro Cable 14, with the Metro Cable 14 address. It's metro14live.saccounty.net. You can also view the meeting through the Board of Supervisors website, which is sccob.saccounty.net. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by submitting written comments electronically. Comments submitted in person will be delivered to the Board of Supervisors by staff. Public comments will be accepted until the adjournment of the meeting distributed to the Board of Supervisors and included in the record.
Oh, yes.
You may submit public comments in the following ways. You can do so digitally and remotely by going to bird, I'm sorry, boardclerk@satcounty.net. That's B-O-A-R-D clerk C-L-E-R-K@satcounty.net. You can go online at sccob@satcounty.net and click Make a Comment Electronically. Or you can do so in person at 708 Street in the board, outside of board chambers, where, again, our staff are prepared to collect written comments and see that the chair receives them in the order that they are given. And with that, I believe it is time to kind of state the obvious. This is not a normal way to conduct our business, but neither has it been the normal way of living for the past several days, if not weeks. These are unprecedented times. It goes without saying that we're all trying to grapple with. And certainly, as an essential function of government, this board will continue to function as well as it can to give the public the rightful means to petition their county government for them to see the transparent activities that we are elected to provide in terms of serving them. And I want to first thank our clerk of the board for all of her effort and certainly all of her staff's effort to arrange these meeting, this meeting setting the way she has. For those that perhaps can't see, we do have even our staff here in chambers appropriately spaced apart. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we have people stationed outside, again, appropriately spaced and protected to collect public comments to see that we can conduct our business here this morning. One of the things that I never thought I would be doing as an elected member of this board is ordering a stay-at-home directive, as we have done so last week. And at the same time, of course, the governor of California announced a statewide similar order. It's something that I did not cherish doing by any means, but at the same time, it is uniquely required at this point, given the nature of this health crisis. And I know that my colleagues have all been faced with various challenges over the last few days and last few weeks, and we will continue to be challenged, quite frankly. And we will continue to do the best job that we can to serve the public here in Sacramento County. I do want to, as I did last Thursday with the announcement of the stay-at-home order, I would like to thank some specific members of our county team. First and foremost, I would like to thank our CEO, Mr. Nav Gill, who has been very, very busy in recent days and weeks assembling his team to do what I think is an admirable job of kind of sequentially getting us to this point while at the same time making sure that we don't inadvertently panic the public. So, thank you, Mr. CEO, for all your effort.
You're welcome.
I do want to thank Mr. Bruce Wagstaff. He is obviously our deputy executive in charge of countywide services and public health falls, falls under his direction. And he too has been instrumental in making sure that we are thoughtful and deliberate in our effort to protect the public. Certainly, probably the most, the person that's been most busy over the past few weeks is Dr. Peter Bealenson, who serves as our Health Services Director. This board knows just how busy he has been, whether it's been hour-to-hour offering new public advice and direction and orders relative to our intent to protect the public or his, his very transparent way of being candid with the public and the media about what we're attempting to do and how we're attempting to do that. So, I want to thank Dr. Bealenson. Certainly, the signatory to the order is our Public Health Officer, Dr. Olivia Casiri. And she too has been working night and day, hand-in-hand with our Health Services personnel, public health folks in our CEO's office to make sure that, again, we're being very methodical in how we, how we treat this crisis. So, thanks to her. And then, I also want to thank Kim Nava. She is our Public Information Director here for Sacramento County, and you can imagine she has been extraordinarily busy attempting to get out information in timely fashion, not just as it relates to media interests, but certainly as it relates to informing the public about our service, the continuity of our service delivery, and certainly informing the public about measures to protect their, their health. So, thanks to Ms. Nava. And then, lastly, I would like to thank, in their entirety, all the public servants of Sacramento County. Again, these are extraordinary times that deserve extraordinary attention as, as public servants in local government. Everyone I know is doing everything they possibly can to simultaneously protect themselves, protect their families, but certainly protect the public. And that goes across every single agency and department of this, of this county. I also want to thank my colleagues directly, as I did last Thursday, for all of your leadership. This is taking, this is a kind of a new experience in terms of how we collectively manage this type of crisis. We really haven't had this kind of pandemic in 102 years, if you think about it. And so, we're not going to necessarily be perfect at what we're doing, but it's the leadership of folks on this board, certainly the leadership in our sister agencies, the elected leadership and executive leadership, administrative leadership in those agencies, whether they be municipal government, school districts, the state of California, and the federal government. I think we're, we're doing our very best, again, to work in a very collaborative fashion to achieve the objective of protecting the public's health. So, with that.
I propose a standing ovation for our staff. I just think they're working so hard.
Chair. So, with that, those, that concludes my, my opening remarks, given the unique, unique circumstances of the day. I don't know if any other members of the board want to make any opening comments, but they're certainly are free to do so at this point. Any opening comments? No? Okay. All right, and no comments from our CEO?
None. Thank you for the comments. Really appreciate it.
Okay, very good. All right, first item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the agenda. I do have some comments on the agenda.
Well, okay. Chair.
Are we at that part now?
Well, let me just let you guys know that you have Consent Matters, items 1 through 34, and I don't have any notes for you today.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'd like the record to reflect, I'm going to recuse myself on item three out of an abundance of caution. And then, I do have a comment on number 25, so you want to set that aside for the moment. And number eight.
Twenty-five and eight. So, let's start with eight. Item eight is a contract for the Sacramento International Airport New Aircraft Rescue Firefighting Facility Project. The bids are to be received on April 30th.
Thank you. I did talk to the executive yesterday about this. I, I have a little bit of concern that airports' budget is going to be hit pretty hard with all the flights being canceled, and it may all work out fine, but I just want to make sure that when the bids come in, that there is a review of whether it's appropriate to go forward with this because things are changing so fast.
We will absolutely do that.
Thank you. And then, 25?
Twenty-five is a resolution to suspend enforcement of zoning and business license conditions related to the limitation of hours of deliveries of grocery or pharmacy items to grocery, convenience, or similar stores during the local emergency for the novel coronavirus disease epidemic, COVID-19.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that this is something that, over the years, we've worked very hard on, that, that the trucks that deliver our groceries don't wake up the neighborhoods in the middle of the night. And we had a lot of that 10 years ago. I'm sure Mr. Natoli will remember that.
Yes.
And it is in use permits. And, and the only reason I bring it up is because it does say in the resolution, the ending of their ability to restore more goods to the grocery stores, but it doesn't say that in the staff report. And I just want to make that public note that this suspension of the enforcement of provisions that limit the timing of the deliveries by trucks or other vehicles lasts as long as we're in a state of local emergency. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If you call item two, please.
Did you say item two? Item number two is the authority to execute the artwork loan agreement with Battery Park City Authority for the temporary loan of a county-owned work of art entitled "The House Will Not Pass for Any Color But Its Own" by Mildred Howard for a public exhibition in Battery Park City, New York from April 15th through April, February 15th, 2021.
Yes. I don't know who maintains, I assume it's either General Services or airports maintains the inventory of public art that's either been relocated or on temporary retirement. I guess my question is, is that how does one know if something's available outside of the artist? Is there some registry that we maintain, Mr. Gill, that for art in public places, that artworks that are retained by the county, that we either make it available on temporary loan or a permanent loan? This is going to be shipped clear across the country for a period of a year. I guess it'll come back to us. Is there, again, this is the first time I've seen an item like this show up on the agenda. The question is, is that, does it make sense in the event that the exhibition is over in New York and they want to return it to us, would it be, make sense to have it on permanent loan or is it something we intend to reinstall in some future airport renovation or expansion or modification? Again, I just, I'm curious now about, is there a listing that somebody maintains in General Services of all the artwork that either is retained in, in current use and/or, as I said, put, you know, put on, reprieved for a while? Again, I'm, I'm pleased we're able to do this, that somebody gets a chance to see it. We, obviously, we paid this to the enterprise, the airport enterprise, when we did airport construction, but just to raise a number of questions now. And again, this may be not, certainly not the time, there's any urgency to this. I'm willing to support the item. I'm just curious.
I can answer those. This is a unique circumstance. The house was placed right by the TSA.
Right. I remember.
And TSA approached us and said that they thought that was a security risk, and that's one of the.
Right.
Very unique situation that we had to decommission the art piece. Since we ended up buying it, we had it. All our other art pieces are being used for what they're supposed to be. We were approached by New York about opportunity with, with artists, so we did agree to do this. Once they're done with it, of course, we will have a discussion with them. Do they want to keep it? Do they want to give it back? What do they want to do with that? But I want to assure you that the other art pieces that we have at airport and other places, they're all displayed for the purpose they were. This was a unique situation that we could not fit it anywhere else in our airport.
So, how did they know?
It's just because the way it is, you can't see through it.
Yeah.
So, the line of vision is not there. And you can imagine the airport setting, line of vision is extremely important for TSA and sheriff's deputies.
So, did we advertise that we had this available for exhibition to other communities? How did somebody know about it clear over New York?
To the Arts Commission at that point. We worked through them, and then I think the artist too. She has some contacts back. She's from that part of the world. And we agreed that her art piece is beautiful. We have no question about that. But have other folks be able to see it, so.
So, did any discussion occur relative to a, you know, a permanent loan agreement versus a temporary? I mean, we're going to ship it clear across the country, and then they're going to ship it back a year from now, and we're going to put it back into storage. So, I guess I'm just curious about that.
I think we'll continue to dialogue with them if they like it, if it works for them. We'll see if we can do it permanent.
Yeah.
But remember, it's our property too, then it will be.
I understand.
It will be compensation for us. There's all those details that we got to work through with them, if, if they want the piece.
Okay. I didn't see there was any compensation in the agreement. It was just they have to.
It's not. I mean, if we were to sell it.
Oh, right. Yeah. They have to insure it, and obviously, they, you know, any modifications to it. Okay. I guess you'll keep us posted on that.
Yep.
All right. The other question I had, Madam Chair, was, I just comment on item 28, if you could, please call that.
Item 28, authorize the Director of the Department of Transportation to execute the North Vineyard Station Roadway Improvement Implementation Agreement between Hedge 22 LLC and the County of Sacramento.
Okay. I support the agreement, again, this is consistent, obviously, with a couple of other previous actions this board's taken, but what concerned me was on page four, this continual slippage. And now, it says that in the third line on top of the page, county's currently working on modifications for trigger thresholds included in North Vineyard Station's specific plan, which will include flexibility regarding construction improvements. Staff anticipates, and this was written, obviously, before some of the recent, you know, activity in our community relative to the COVID and so forth, but anticipates those modifications we brought before the board this summer. We were, we were going to have this last summer, and I thought it was going to come, I thought it was scheduled initially in April, so I guess, I don't know, Mr. Hartwig has the information on this, but the continual slippage on this, you know, we're well into this, and now we anticipate this summer. It doesn't say we're going to come this summer. And so, there's some need, I think, to get this to the board, to have those discussions because as much as this allows some small development to move forward, there's some triggers out there that are board-approved that, you know, we need to have a discussion. And we, you know, we've been years into this, and I recognize transportation staff has done work relative to the, you know, the fee program, which was important. That was done nearly a year ago now. And so, I guess, I don't know what continues to be the delay here. There has been ongoing conversations with developers, with landowners, with members of this board, and here we now, now looking at this summer. And again, this was written before, you know, the recent, you know, issues that obviously are going to impact workflow and, you know, workload by county staff. And so, I don't know now why this has taken so long, and so, maybe Steve has an answer.
Yes, Supervisor Nefale, I can answer that. In fact, the, the whole package of the SCTDF fee and the adjustment to all of the projects that were included in that, because of the fact that we procured other money and had been able to build some of the projects, and so, some of those came off the list.
Right.
The adjustment to the fee was last summer. That was the first phase of the three-phase piece of getting this whole thing adjusted to the point where it helps to, to allow some of this, these projects to move forward. So, that was in June, I believe, of last summer.
Correct.
And then, late last calendar year, came back with the reimbursement and credit policy, which the board approved. And so, that was the second phase of the whole package. And the third phase, which we anticipate coming back in July, is the trigger mechanisms, and that's one of the things in the, in the vineyard area that is kind of a problem because things that were felt manageable back before the economic downturn turn out to be not so palatable as littler subdivisions try and come in and do individual projects and hitting the trigger of then having to build significant improvements. So, the, the transportation staffs have been working diligently on that. They did the, the other phases. They had to work on those and focus on those, and now they're focusing right now on the triggers, and we expect to bring something back in July.
Okay.
And that will be the final phase of getting this whole thing that this refers to adjusted.
If I'm correct, though, that, that may entail more than just having a staff report before this board for adoption because it goes to zoning agreements that were put into place and actual maps that were mapped with certain requirements on them. And again, I don't know, I know certainly you and certainly County Council and others have been involved, and in public infrastructure finance, Bob Davidson and his folks have been involved in this, but it may not be settled in July unless you've got a new angle that you're taking at this because if, again, you can correct me if I'm mistaken on this, but my understanding was, and that was one of the compounding factors, it might require actually going back into agreements that were approved 15 years ago, maps that were finalized and/or zoning agreements, obviously, that were final, that re-zoned land. And if that's the case, you know, how we're, you know, that could mean that it can be years beyond any time the board would act in July. So, I guess I'm, you know, do you have any status update on that?
Well, you had asked about, or you had said that it seems to be taking a long time. Well, part of that is that they have been working on those things, where we have to make changes to agreements, where we have to make potential code changes, and then how we adjust the triggers to a point where we go away from the trigger system where the next unit built causes the need to build a six-lane roadway to paying fair shares by those developments as they go along. So, there's a different kind of approach and concept to how that's going to be moved forward. And yes, there will need to be changes, but that's what they've been working on, is putting that package together, and it would require changes to certain agreements, conditions, and that would all be brought to the board for their consideration.
As a, as a full package? You're going to have all those bundled together with every, all the landowners and developers?
What we would, what we would tend to bring to the board first is the adjustment from going from triggers to, to this fair share, you know, paying the, the piece that they're responsible for, and then as individuals come in and want to move forward, then we would adjust those agreements and bring those to the board.
Okay. And I don't want to belabor this consent item this morning, I have to support this, but I just would say that there's, and embedded in that is another, is an important conversation. This is why we had the triggers to begin with, is because we got so far behind in the infrastructure builds in those areas, and so, how we balance that. But I know even coming out of the recession, we had these conversations several years ago, and I just think it's important, from the currency of it, that we, you know, have that focus because, you know, we get all this pressure about building homes and constructing, you know, housing for folks, and yet I don't want to lose sight of the reason why we put these in, in effect to begin with. And so, I don't know if there's going to be a consent item on the calendar, obviously, it's going to be a discussion before this board as to how we balance that.
No, it's, it's not going to be a consent item. This has got broad policy issues, so when we bring it back.
Yes.
It is going to be very, there's a lot of steps in there that we need to walk everybody through, so it's not a consent item that we're bringing back.
Okay. All right. I'm fine. Thanks.
If not, I do want to, for the record, to note that we are in receipt of one comment for item 27. Okay? Entertained a motion on consent?
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor Frost, seconded by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item three due to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Item 35, adopt urgency ordinance and/or resolution relating to temporary moratorium on evictions during emergency.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and take the liberty of starting our deliberation and discussion about this item. We don't have a traditional staff report, first and foremost, but I do want the board and the public to understand that the chair has been working in close consultation with County Council over the past several days on this item that I've brought forward. I also want to make note that, again, for the record, we do, we do have 79 to date, or to this hour, we have 79 written comments received, I believe, on the, the item. And I know many of you are also on the, serve also on the STA board, where I believe we had a matrix of opposed, opposed support and neutral for a recent somewhat controversial item. I took, again, the liberty of working with our clerk of the board so that her staff is not overburdened with this item or with future items to have to do that necessarily, but we agreed that a good, kind of acceptable means of acknowledging public comment is to at least acknowledge the number of comments that we received. So, you're not going to get an opposed support, neutral qualifier for these types of issues moving forward in this environment. So, with that, I will, I will start off with the reason for this urgency measure. First, I want to make it absolutely clear to my colleagues, to the public and the staff that unlike what we deliberated, again, at my behest last November, which was then an urgency measure on, to protect renters from eviction in unincorporated Sacramento County, this is, it's a similar action that I'm requesting, but it is for entirely different reason and purpose, as many other counties and cities across California have done or are in the process of doing, and it's my understanding that even today, other counties like Sacramento County are deliberating the merits of an urgency measure to protect residential renters from eviction, given the threat of the COVID-19 virus. This, this is necessary. This is not a measure that is steeped in anything other than protecting the health and well-being of the public. And quite frankly, it's not just about renters either. We, as you know, have issued our own stay-at-home order last Thursday, and the state subsequently did the same later in the day. It's very difficult for me to reconcile and rationalize how we could, as a local government, issue such an order to stay at home when, in fact, I believe strongly that because people are losing their access to income or they're having it interrupted, that very, in very short order, they will be unable to be able to pay their rents. And as such, I think that there's an immediate threat for an increase, a substantial one in homelessness here in our community. And certainly, that is something that we grapple with under normal circumstances and consumes quite a bit of our time and energy here to, to help those in need and to do it with thoughtfulness in mind. But these, again, are unusual circumstances, and I don't see how we can simultaneously order people to stay home if they find themselves in a position where they might become homeless and therefore expose themselves more so to, to the virus. And because of the nature of the virus, being that many folks are asymptomatic while at the same time shedding the virus, they would pose a threat, a public health threat, quite frankly, to others if they're forced into environments that are filled with more people, say in shelters, or in the worst-case scenario, if they find themselves on the street or the riverbank in encampments. And so, again, that's why I believe strongly that this is a public health measure. I would like to acknowledge, because, again, we don't have the opportunity to hear oral testimony from folks that feel passionately on both sides about this today, that I know we are all in receipt of those comments, written comments that I mentioned at the outset of this item. And we've heard from renters that are stressing the nature of the urgency for this, for this policy. We have heard from landlords who feel that this would interrupt their access to income. I've heard from several landlords that are in support of this urgency measure, even though they have income properties, rental income properties, who I think would otherwise, out of the goodness of their hearts, refuse to evict anyone. But again, this is a public health measure, and so, I don't believe we can just rely on and hope for people to act consistently without having some enforceability to this. Again, this is not unusual. There are other counties and cities across the state that have either adopted it or are in the process of considering it. I know that it is an issue that. I know that it is an issue that all of us feel strongly about, and we'll probably see just how strongly we feel here in a minute, in terms of our discussion and deliberation. But I just wanted to make it clear the reasons why I've brought this forward, again, working in close conjunction with county council's office. Procedurally, I would like to kind of set the table for how this morning's deliberation on this matter is going to proceed. It is unusual, as you'll note from the board letter and the board materials for this item. We are considering both a urgency ordinance, which requires a supermajority four-fifths vote of this board to go into effect immediately, if it is the will of the board, upon that voting threshold. And we're also considering a resolution. I want to make it clear, and the resolution, by the way, has identical language. I want to make it clear that we're voting separately on each. My intent is to have us vote first on the urgency measure, of course, following deliberation and consideration of that item, and then we will move on to the, to the resolution. And by the way, the resolution requires a two-thirds simple majority vote of the board. The distinction between the two, put simply, is that an urgency ordinance, or I should just say an ordinance, comes with more force and effect in terms of enforceability than a resolution. I think it's best to consider a resolution, a clear expression of the county's intent, desire, to some extent, hope, and an ordinance, whether it be urgency or a normal ordinance, can, can be enforced. Do we want it necessarily be the enforcement body for such things? Absolutely not, just like we don't want to have to enforce stay-at-home orders through our law enforcement. But again, I think the, this is my opinion, I think the rental ownership community just needs to know how, how much we, as a board, as a county, find this to be a critical public health measure to protect everyone. Finally, I also want to make it clear, before we deliberate first on the urgency ordinance, that my intent, depending on the outcome of the vote of the urgency ordinance, and I have, again, consulted with county council on this, is that as the board chair, if we do not pass an urgency measure, this, this morning, I will be calling a special meeting in 24 hours of this board. And the purpose of that special meeting will be to consider at that point in time the introduction of a normal ordinance that would do the same, come with the same force and effect as the urgency ordinance, but it would be treated as normal ordinance, meaning that we'd have to have an introduction of the second, a second reading, I guess it would be, five days from tomorrow, and then it would go into force and effect 30 days from, from, I guess it would be Monday. Of course, we'd have to have a subsequent special meeting early next week to do that. The purpose of that is going to be, it can be compared to a belt suspenders and another belt, if you will. While we wouldn't have the urgency ordinance in place if it fails to pass the orifice threshold vote today, we would hopefully have at least a resolution in place by way of a two-thirds majority, by way of a vote this morning, and then the rental community would understand that, again, if it's the will of the board to support a normal ordinance by a simple majority, that would be voted on early next week, that that protection would be in place 30 days from, from that vote, meaning it could be, May 1st would be the earliest, is my understanding. So with that, I certainly want to offer the, the mic, the floor to my colleagues. I'm sure there's a lot of interest in addressing this, this matter. And before we do that, again, I just want to thank especially county council's office for her guidance. I know she's been buried with a number of other pressing matters as of late, but again, because of the nature of this being a critical component part in protecting public health, I appreciate her time and energy and her assistance. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, just, just a kind of process question, because obviously, as we open this meeting, it's extraordinarily quiet and quiet in the chambers today because of the way we're conducting the meeting under this set of circumstances. So, if I can understand from the clerk, if folks were in the lobby that wished, that hadn't submitted comments electronically, they're able to do that this morning, is that correct?
Yes, so we're accepting electronic public comments you can make directly from the agenda, or they could have emailed me. If they come in person, we have staff outside of the chambers, and they're bringing those in, and you guys are getting your comments in real time.
Okay, but they're not able to come to the podium? They're not able to enter the chambers, is that correct? The other question I have, then, with the receiving information, you've kept a tally, are you going to share that in a moment of, I understood you weren't going to go forward, you weren't going to keep a tally, but you, you did submit information at least yesterday, I guess, to us that kind of gave us the total of the comments, some of those being neutral, some of those being in support of what had been proposed here this morning, and then some of those being opposed?
So, we were doing that, but we stopped because it's hard for us to make that interpretation if someone is in support or not, and so at this point, the only thing I can give you is the total amount of comments that were received.
Okay, so that's, and I heard that going forward, I just didn't know, I know up until yesterday afternoon, you were, you'd give us a tally of that, so. And then, we don't have a call-in ability then to the meeting, I mean, if they called in and voiced concern, you take that telephonically, but there's no, I mean, some boards are allowing for the public to comment?
We're not set up for the public to call in at this time.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's all I have right now.
I would just stress the, to address what Flo just mentioned in terms of some of the email correspondence being difficult for her staff to determine position by the, by the composer of the comment, an example of that would be a number of comments we've received, for instance, from folks that are, that seem to be supportive of what we're attempting to do with this moratorium on renter evictions, but say it doesn't go far enough, for example. And so how do you, how do you make the determination of which box to check? And it's just kind of the nature of the beast. So, again, I appreciate everything Flo and her staff have, have done to manage this. I know it hasn't, hasn't been easy. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. I wanted to point out, even though you referenced you've been working with county council, that she is not a policymaker, and I don't want the public to think that by her writing this, she is in support or denial of it. My office has looked at the form letters, the, I mean, the comment letters, they appear to be mostly form letters with no reference to their jurisdiction, and this ordinance is in reference to the unincorporated county, not the city of, not from the cities of any of the seven cities in, in our jurisdiction, in the county. One of the things I'm concerned about is, is how we help out the small landlords. I'm going to read something, an email that I got that is typical of a number of communications that I got, that says, hello, Susan Peters, I know your heart is in the right place, but who is going to cover my losses when our tenants don't pay us rent for our little two-bedroom duplex that my wife and I bought seven years ago, with hopes of supplementing our small retirement income? Obviously, we all have bills that are due no matter what, and how are we supposed to collect the monies owed us in September? How are the tenants going to come up with an additional four months of rent in September? I believe you are creating a larger problem. We are retired and therefore do not qualify for unemployment, which our tenants should qualify for. Where's our safety net? Please consider the impact this temporary eviction ban would have on all landlords. Not all landlords are rich. I am a retired truck driver, just trying to keep our bills paid. And in the unincorporated county, there are a lot of duplexes that people have purchased to help in their retirement, very similar to this, and that is a reflection on how to help them is not in this ordinance. So additionally, this is slightly more complex. We don't know what owners/landlords loan covenants are. Financing has really changed over the last 20 years, where something like this, where you would waive rent, it has to be approved by the lender. And if you don't get approval by the lender, which by the way, takes a long time, they could be in violation of their loan covenants, which could then cause a property to go into foreclosure. And that would be a disaster to have foreclosures all over the unincorporated county. So I'd like to know what can be done for the small landlords, and what we could do about investigating loan covenants and how they might be affected by an ordinance like this.
Was that a question for me? I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no. That was a question for the chair.
Okay.
Do you want me to respond as you present your questions?
I think you can do it afterwards. I think Supervisor Frost is next, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, so, first I want to start by saying that I, I truly want to help everyone in the county. I'm not sure this ordinance does that, and I, I wanted to just go over a couple of my concerns. Number one, right now, at this moment in time, people who are facing eviction are not actual victims of coronavirus. The process of eviction takes time, and so oftentimes, like if a tenant is late on their rent, for instance, if, if some, we started about a week ago with our stay-at-home policy, there are a lot of people who have been without income as a result of that, or suffered loss of income, which might impact their rent for April. So if they don't pay their rent on April 1st, it wouldn't, generally, most landlords will have a policy of if your rent is, it's due on the 1st and delinquent on the 15th, and so it's not until, it would, I guess I'll just simplify it by saying the eviction process takes anywhere from 45 days to 70 or 90 days. And so, the point I want to make here is not that I get there's people suffering, but there are actually landlords out there, some of them small landlords who are living on their retirement, who have not received rent for four months, and so they're financially challenged at this time. This is all happening, you know, we, under the backdrop of an announcement that came out yesterday from FHFA regarding some relaxation of, you know, or offering mortgage, hold mortgageors hardship forbearance. And hardship forbearance, what that is, is kind of like with the student loans, where they allow the mortgageor to not pay their payments for anywhere up to maybe three years, and then they can put those, tack those payments onto the back of their loan, payments plus interest onto the back of their loan. The, the challenge is that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac only represent about 42% of the single-family guaranteed loans, and maybe around 48% of multifamily. So, there are a lot of investors out there that mortgage lenders sell their loans to that are private investors, and so not everyone is protected under, under these Fannie and Freddie hardship forbearance. I also want to say that a lot of people who have rental properties qualified for their loan, either on their owner-occupied home or on their rental property, based on the income that comes from the rental property, and so, point well taken from Supervisor Peters about loan covenants and violation of those loan covenants. I personally think that this is a problem that was caused by government. Government, we're the ones who have asked people to stay at home, and this, the best solution for this problem is not to pass the burden on to other people, or, you know, on to the landlords, but to provide cash for everyone. Tenants, there are employees who were sent home or having a hard time making their owner-occupied house payment. And so, there is right now a federal stimulus bill, and the state is talking about stimulus bills. In fact, the Dow Jones is up 1,800 this morning, because there's a lot of optimism that they're going to vote on this stimulus and be able to pass it within the next couple hours. And so, I, I feel this ordinance, although well-intended, is only going to help a very small portion of the problem, and it's going to push the problem deeper and extend hardship to, to others. The, the best way to solve this problem is with the stimulus, they're promising, you know, there's, there's, included within the stimulus is cash for people, cash for businesses to get people through this time. And so, I feel like we, we have time, it's not, this is not something we have to do right at this moment. I would like to propose that we table this and give the stimulus bill a chance to pass and see what the options that are coming down, see what our, see what the help that we're going to receive, and then we'll have a better idea on how we can help those that were left out and who, who really need our help, like the businesses and the commercial side and the small landlords. So my, I guess I, I would like to propose that we sort of continue this or table this until we know what that stimulus is going to look like, that package, and what, what help we're getting, so that we can craft something that meets, better meets the needs of everyone.
Supervisor Toly.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Certainly want to express appreciation for, I think, the thoughtful comments thus far this morning, and I think the thought that went into what's before us. I think as, I've reflected on this, as I'm sure all my colleagues have, and those have spoken, obviously, have, you know, raised some issues, I think, that certainly are relevant to the matter before us. But what's happened over the last three weeks in our great country, since March 4th, and I guess even late February, but certainly in this state, in less than three weeks, we've gone from state of emergency to stay-at-home orders, and we've seen what's transpired as it relates to, not only, I think, the, the anxiety, but in some cases, fear, and certainly the wave that we're attempting to avoid as it relates to a public health crisis like none other, that certainly has occurred in my lifetime anyway, and I think the chair referenced it earlier, his comments, you know, the pandemic of the early 1900s, and again, hopefully we can avoid, you know, great sickness and, and suffering and deaths by the actions that have been both ordered, but as, I think, advised, and I certainly want to extend compliments to what the chair offered and others to our staff, but to people throughout this community, who, those who, one, are making the sacrifices, but also are those that continue to work in various pursuits to assure that public health is protected, that medical facilities are, are available, that groceries are on the shelves, and that some of the essential elements of everyday life or lifelines for a lot of folks are kept in place and, and as we go forward. And I guess that that's part of the reflection here on what's before us, is that we've gone from a declaration of emergency earlier this month to now where we are today, and the numbers continue to climb as we know more about, as it relates to testing, both regionally and statewide, but certainly in our country and throughout the world. And again, it's serious, and I think we all take it very seriously, and obviously, just the way we're conducting our meeting here today is a reflection of not only adherence to good advisory, relative sanitation and of not only adherence to good advisory, relative to sanitation and hygiene, but also to protecting ourselves and all those around us, those we care about and those in our community. And I make those comments, it kind of has a preface to what, you know, I see in the ordinance and the resolutions before us, is that a reflection on very extraordinary times. I can certainly recall during my service on this board, you know, the 9/11, which, you know, hit this nation and caused tremendous death and destruction. And things got very quiet. And those were extraordinary times. And, you know, this county, for its employees and for the ways that we could assist at the local level, again, being certainly, you know, removed geographically, but nonetheless tied in so many ways to what transpired on that day and the days following, and how this country worked to, you know, rebuild not only its economy, but to heal the wounds and, you know, mourn the losses. And I think what we're trying to do here through the orders is to avoid, you know, not only death, but certainly tremendous sickness and all the choices that then come with that. And one only needs to turn the radio or television on or any other source of information to see how this dominates all the conversation, all the discussion, our daily lives in so many ways. And for those who have been ordered to stay home, advised to stay home, in order to protect their own health and those, them around them, and those that they would come in contact with, it's going to mean loss of jobs. We already know that. We know that it's going to mean certainly loss of income. And in the whole matrix of how our community functions is going to be affected. When you see, you know, the pictures that were in the newspapers this week of, you know, of, it's unprecedented. Schools are closed, churches are closed, retail establishments are closed. You can't, you can no longer dine out at this point in time. We're now closing public places even that are outdoors. And that is very eerie, but it's very unsettling. And I think it goes to a degree of seriousness. And so what we have before us today, I believe, is a measure that would not waive a tenant's obligations to certainly maintain the contract between them and the landlords. And certainly the letter that Supervisor Peters wrote, I read that one as well. I have it right here, highlighted in yellow the comments that she read. And I take those things to heart, because again, not everyone, you know, is a corporate investment group that owns large multifamily properties. There are a whole range of those. But in the unincorporated area where we have the ability to impact certainly the lives of folks, as it relates to the situations that are all unique, but there's certainly, there's a lot of sameness there in the sense that people are being affected in ways that can make them certainly, I think, very vulnerable to, you know, being homeless. And I think that goes to the essence of what I, what I read here, is that this is effort, albeit one that may have impacts that are unintended. But I think the intent behind it is to try to address a very serious situation, to be a part of the solution, and recognizing that, I think, as Supervisor Frost said, that we anticipate that help is on the way. And I guess we'll know what that looks like. But it's going to still take, you know, some time for that to all settle out. And I assume there'll be assistance up and down the chain for every, for airlines, for the hospitality industry, for property owners, for business owners, big and small. And so I know that at different levels legislatively, folks are looking to do what we can to soften the impacts, and yet continue to maintain the whole emphasis on this public health crisis, one that again, could be epic if we don't continue to, I think, take the actions we're taking that have, again, consequences for folks in their housing situation. And we know that here in California, and certainly in this community, and we've spent hours at this dais, talking about how we can try to help address what was an existing situation relative to homelessness. And I think the last thing that I would want for anybody in this community, certainly to be homeless, but to because of consequences far beyond the control of anybody, you know, certainly in this room, but in legislature, or in Congress, or the level of the President, nobody controls, you know, what diseases entered the, you know, the mainstream of society. On the other hand, we have the ability to intervene, and that's what we're attempting to do, and to hopefully prevent and to guard against that. And so what I see is being certainly unprecedented times, oftentimes calls for unprecedented actions. I don't think this would be something we'd be considering if this, if the circumstances weren't so dire and weren't so consequential. And so I think from the standpoint of what's before us today, yes, it will have impacts. I trust that, as has been said, though, that we'll be able to, to hopefully moderate those impacts. And if this is over quickly, as some predict, the impacts may be far less for everybody, and that's a good thing. If it gets extended, then we're going to be in a set of circumstances that obviously would challenge, I think, the very metal of this community, but certainly of communities up and down the state and throughout this nation. And I don't think we know what yet is coming our way. But we certainly hope that help is on the way and relief in lots of different areas. And so I'm prepared to support what's before us this morning, recognizing that obviously, if we had a more normal setting, we'd have the ability for folks to come to the podium and speak their mind, either in support of or in opposition to, or suggesting comments. But I've read what's been presented to us, and I thank those that have taken the time, again, in very, you know, unexpected circumstances, to take the time to write to us and to express their concerns, to express their support, express their opposition. But I think in light of what is before us as a community, and certainly as a state and nation, I'm prepared at the local level to support this today. And again, recognizing that, you know, we don't know where we're headed with this, but we hope we're going to come out of this, you know, sometime soon. In the meantime, I think we need to offer this level of protection for folks. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Toly. With that said, I'm going to not cut off conversation by any means, but knowing your position on this, I'm going to make the motion, look for a second, to adopt the urgency ordinance as is.
I would second it.
Two seconds on that. I think, I'm sure Toly beat you to the punch there, Supervisor Kennedy. So we'll vote here in a minute. But I want to make sure, because my colleagues deserve it, to, if they ask me a question, if they have concerns, express my way. I want to be able to respond. Supervisor Peters, a moment ago, asked about, she expressed concerns about both, incorrect if I'm wrong, the loan covenants, and also she read, written testimony from a constituent who has expressed concerns because of their scale. They're a small rental income property owner, and they've, I think, done exactly what we would expect to do if we were in their shoes, expressed concern about their circumstance in this. And I want to be clear, this is not proposed to spite any particular component, part of the population that has rental income. In fact, I had some very productive conversations with Supervisor Natoli leading up to this, this morning's vote. He was the one supervisor that I can talk to, given the Brown Act. And to his credit, he challenged me to think very carefully about this. And he challenged me to think very carefully about it with regard to smaller rental income property owners. And my reply to him is that, again, it's redundant, but I reiterate, this is not about making value judgments between the types of rental income property owners or the types of renters. This is, at its essence, a public health measure. Some on this dais may not believe the scale of the threat.
That is not true.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Go ahead, but don't, don't make my remarks into something they aren't.
Did I just say your remarks? I said at this dais. Maybe I'm replying to her, okay? Thank you. I have the floor. Okay. Supervisor Frost, since you brought it up, just mentioned that she didn't believe, you know, kind of the need to stay at home, and it was a government-inspired problem.
I didn't say that. I did not say that.
Fine. I believe the threat. And you only need to see what's happening in Italy and in Spain. You only need to hear the governor of California, every afternoon, explain the death toll going up. We went from 20,000 hospital beds to 50,000 beds in terms of our need. So for me, this is, again, a public health measure. And so with regards to the concerns expressed about the landlords, there's actually been more activity at the federal level before today, at the county level here in Sacramento, to guard against the impacts for rental income property owners than they have renters. And so that's why I believe it's incumbent upon us to act swiftly. I don't think we can take the time to, you know, vet this to be, you know, a perfect ordinance at this moment because of the nature of the threat. It should be obvious to everyone. Okay? So with that, there's a motion and a second. I understand there's others that want to speak. Susan Peters.
Thank you. I have a great deal of sympathy for those who are, may be, have trouble with their landlord going forward. I would prefer the resolution form of this because it's encouragement to work together. And I believe in people's hearts, they want to work with their tenants. I've talked to a number of landlords who said they are talking individually to their tenants who have income problems. And the other thing is as strong, and so I believe in the encouragement that would come from passing the resolution. And I think it's pretty clear that the financial impacts of this crisis are equal to the health crisis. So I give them equal weight.
Supervisor Toly.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. I guess I would just weigh in. Obviously, we have a matter before us, a motion before us, but that I think all of us, however we get to our determination on the motion that's on the floor, you know, certainly take this seriously. Obviously, we come from different life experiences and certainly different, you know, political philosophies at times. But, you know, I know we've worked together. And again, I think the commendation for the staff this morning, Ms. Chair, that you made certainly reflects those that we entrust on a hour-to-hour, minute-by-minute basis throughout this county to protect the public in times of crisis or in times of more normal activities. And again, whatever vote we have here this morning, again, I certainly, I just want to make it clear, I don't question, you know, people's belief about how serious this is. And I don't think that was your intent in your comments, Ms. Chair. I just, I would just say that I think we are concerned, we may come at this differently and see it differently. But in my view, as I stated earlier, it is an epic public health crisis, and that's why I'm prepared to support the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
I just want to clarify, I do believe that, you know, these are unprecedented times. I care about tenants, and I also care about landlords and small business folks. I believe that this is not anyone's fault and that it's caused by government. Government asked people to go home. So government should bear the weight of it. It shouldn't be passed on to the small landlords and to those who are also suffering under the weight of all this. Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to stay within my taped area and reach the microphone. You know, typically, I don't, you know, make comments when things that I'm thinking have already been stated. But this, as we have all stated, this is, these are extraordinary times. And I will weigh in, first of all, Supervisor Natoli, thank you for your comments. I think you were spot on. Because of the extraordinary circumstances that we're in, I think that it is incumbent upon us to look upon those and help those that are the most vulnerable. And I believe that this measure does that. I am completely sympathetic to the comments that Supervisor Peters made, particularly reading the statement that was made by the landlord. But I do believe there are protections in place, far more protections in place for property owners than there are for renters. So I think it is our responsibility to take care of those who are the most vulnerable in these times in particular. And I think that this measure does that. Thus, my support.
Okay, thank you. No one else has chimed in to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Please vote.
And the motion fails.
Okay. So as I mentioned before, at the outset of the item, we, there's two votes associated with the agenda item. One is a vote on the urgency ordinance requiring a four-fifth supermajority vote of the board, which just failed, three to two. We will now consider the resolution, which again, has identical language in it. And I don't know if anyone wants to speak to the resolution. Again, it's a different legislative vehicle than the ordinance, but it essentially has the same language. If not, I will move the item.
I have a comment.
Okay, it's been moved to the second. First, Supervisor Natoli.
Just a question, and actually pertaining to the previous.
Could you clear the screen so we can see what's going on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, it pertained to the previous matter as well. So this is for a question for counsel. So in the resolution, as well as in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, there was the, tied to the governor's order. Again, is there any distinction between that and the local order? Our local health officer had the ability, and actually, we issued the stay-at-home order hours before the governor, you know, put his more blanket order in effect. The declaration of emergency, obviously, preceded ours. So I guess I'm curious, Lisa, how that, the mechanics of any of the two, but certainly how that works. And so would we be wiser to tie it to our local ordinance, where we actually control that state versus the declaration of emergency? Or we, but we tied it to the order, not to the declaration. So if you could just.
Sure. Actually, the best course of action is to tie it to the governor's executive order N 28-20, which gives express authority related to reviction moratorium. The public health order that Sacramento County issued and that the government, governor issued, and I think it was order number 30, but I can't remember, doesn't address specifically this issue. So the way that the resolution reads ties it to the appropriate executive action.
All right. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Supervisor Frost.
So I just want to say that I'm, I'm not going to support this. I, you know, I think if it was stated more broadly, if it was encouragement for tenants to do the best they can and communicate with the landlords, and for landlords to reach out to tenants and give them help wherever they can. I know, I know a lot of people who are landlords who have already cut their rents in half, just in view of this extraordinary situation. I reached out to my tenant to see if they were okay, and if I was prepared to waive their rents if they had lost their income and just give them a month's rent. So I know a lot of landlords that are already going out of their way to help people, encouraging the guarantors to offer forbearance and to create some, some resources or some, you know, a little bit of relaxed, give the landlords time on their loans by giving them, by suspending their mortgage payments for a period of time. So I think if it was stated more broadly, I would, I would support it. But it's, it's not, if we're going to make that recommendation, I'd like to see it more broadly stated so that we're helping everyone understand their part in all of it.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion, a second on the floor, to adopt the resolution. Okay? Please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay. And again, for the public's benefit, the action we just took required a two-thirds vote. So obviously, we have the necessary votes to adopt the resolution, which is in effect when, Lisa?
I think it's actually a simple majority. You keep saying two-thirds.
I'm sorry, a simple majority.
Yeah. A resolution is effective immediately.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as I stated at the outset of this, I prefaced, prefaced it with, again, kind of a belt, on top of belt and suspenders here. I am going to be calling for a special meeting tomorrow, and I have authority to do so as the presiding officer. the presiding officer of the board under Government Code Section 54956 to call that special meeting. Purpose of that meeting will be to essentially set in motion the consideration and, you know, the consideration of hopeful adoption of a regular, I'll just call it a regular ordinance, under the regular process for adopting an ordinance outside of urgency measures, so that that ordinance could be in effect as early as May 1st, given all the reading, second reading activities that this board would have to make. And again, it's only with a simple majority of the board to do that. County Council, do I have that clear?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. CEO, you understand?
Yep.
I would just add, and I know everybody knows, but the meeting can happen telephonically if desired, under the new Brown Act. The meeting, any meeting can happen telephonically under the new waiver of the Brown Act, if that's the will of the board.
I will work with a clerk on setting a time and how we're gonna do logistics. I'll start working-
I believe that the Code Section requires 24-hour-
24-hour notice posting, so whenever you can post the agenda.
That's why I'm gonna suggest that it's gonna be in the afternoon tomorrow. And again, for the public's benefit, this essentially, if adopted, what's being proposed in terms of a normal ordinance would enact the same protections with a simple majority vote of this board. Those protections would go into effect beginning of May, if adopted, and so the only difference here relative to the urgency measure is the time at which point a more enforceable measure and ordinance, separate from the resolution that was adopted earlier, would be in effect. I think I've explained that to death. All right. Okay, next item.
Okay, for item 36, I need a motion to continue this to May 5th. This is the Napa Valley subdivision. It was a request for a tentative subdivision map to create 14 residential lots, a rezone to convert a agricultural 10-zone property to RD 5, a community plan amendment, and a design review to determine compliance with the countywide design guidelines, and the environmental document on this was a negative declaration.
Move to continue.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, I do, we still have item 38, which is the appointments from your own ranks, and then we have your nominations, which is item 39.
Quick question of the clerk. So I note on the agenda it says for 37, this item is continued, but it's a two o'clock item, right?
Yeah, the clerk will continue that item at 2:00.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're on to appointments.
So item 38 is the appointments from your own ranks to the National Association of Counties.
I don't have the materials for that, or do I?
Yeah, that item lists me as alternate, and I do not wish to be the alternate.
Okay. Is there another member?
Anyone else want to serve?
What, what are we talking about?
I'm currently serving as this board's representative to NACO and the alternate to CSAC. I am happy to relinquish my position as an alternate on CSAC to any member of the board that wishes to serve in that capacity.
This is NACO, though.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought we were doing-
Yeah, this is NACO, so you're the member, and we just need to find an alternate. Is there another-
I can do it if no one else wants to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so let's take a motion.
Serna as member and Frost as alternate.
Please vote.
Second.
Unanimous vote. Okay, and now for your nominations, that's item 39.
Thank you.
You are continuing to May 5th. Carmichael, Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Casamna's Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Sacramento County Youth Commission. Your first item is the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Commission. Counsel, excuse me, Supervisor Frost. Please reappoint Shawn Woodland and continue the remaining to May 5. Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Nominate Jesse Garcia as a District 3 nominee for the Cordova CPAT.
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission, Supervisor Serna.
Chief, I recommend continuing the item to April 21st.
Elk Grove Casamna Cemetery District, Supervisor Natoli.
Continue to April 21st, please. We have to do interviews.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Chief, I recommend continuing the item until April 21st.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Same.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Chief, recommend reappointing Barbara Law and nominating Sanal Patel to the Public Health Advisory Board.
Okay. Recreation and Park Commission.
Please continue to April 21st.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory.
Chief, I recommend continuing the item to April 21st.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Peters.
Continue to May 5th, please.
And Supervisor Frost. Please continue to May 5th. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to May 5th, please.
South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to May 5th, please.
And I would like to continue my appointment to May 5th.
Are you, you mean on the Vineyard Area Community Planning?
Did you say South Sacramento Area?
Yeah, on South Sacramento, I only had a nomination for District 2.
I have a continuation for District 1 on my sheet.
And tell me again when you wanted to continue that.
May 5th.
And then the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to May 5th, please.
Supervisor Natoli.
I'll just continue for two weeks. We have an applicant. Please.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay.
And now you have your closed session.
Any comments from CEO before we-
No, no comments.
Okay, any comments by-
I do. I'd like to know if we could just do closed session here rather than go in a closed room? I mean, if you turn the cameras off and the microphones, and it's a very simple closed session, it should take one minute or less.
Having coordinated with the clerk, the thinking is, is that just to make sure and not have to second-guess whether a mic is on, or a camera might be on, or a door is open, that we wanted to have people appropriately spaced on the seventh floor, so that's what we will adjourn to. Yes?
I had one question for council. The chair stated earlier that he only spoke to one member of the board for that item that has nothing to do with the chair, it's just an example. Based upon the governor's relaxation of Brown Act, would, how broadly are we interpreting that? I mean, would that have qualified as a coronavirus issue?
In other words, could he have talked to multiple?
Right.
No, the answer is no to that because of the specific order only says that the board can receive information and deliberate, but meaning from a state or local official. So for instance, the county executive could have a conversation with all five of you, give information, you could discuss it amongst yourselves, but you couldn't deliberate or take action, but it doesn't authorize one board member from talking to another.
Got it. Thank you.
It's an excellent question, though.
Yes.
Supervisor Tully.
Yes, just a question for Nav. Nav, I think you may have gotten an email yesterday communicated by my office from some calls we're receiving, maybe others are receiving them as well, and my guess is we are not empowered to make any changes, but I wanted to just put it out there that in light of the IRS and state franchise tax moving the filing deadlines back to July 15th for both the state and federal income tax, it's raised a question with some folks about property tax, again, talking, going back to some of the conversations about, you know, hardships. And so we've received at least a couple of inquiries, and I trust maybe others have received them as well, as to whether there's any latitude, certainly with the Treasury Task Leader and the County of Sacramento, to, you know, push back the deadline for payment of the second installment of the 1920 property taxes, and I, and so the question came up-
Yeah, we have contacted the state since they're, we're in their jurisdiction on that. We're asking the question, are they gonna do something for state? We're anticipating to hear from them.
Okay, because again, I think it's all embedded in state law. If memory serves me correct on that one, but in the event, you know, that we get an answer, I think it's something, again, maybe, that's why I want to ask it publicly, because people are watching, tuning into this, so.
So just the feedback, not to belabor, I'm looking, Lisa, make sure I'm not going too far in. The issue that comes up with the state conversations, a cash flow issue for governments, that if you do not have that, then the continuity of government, where is that gonna go? But that's the conversation we're having with them, is that different jurisdictions have different level of cash, so if they were extended, our situations, we do not have that much cash on hand, but we have to make a lot of payments, a lot of state stuff that comes in. So it seems a very simple request, but it's complicated in the end, that we have to put out a lot of our general assistance, other type of money, to get money back. So that's part of the deliberation of the state.
And I think the question was, you know, it had a little more urgency to it because obviously we're 24th of March, and April 10th is the filing deadline in order to-
But also with them, the conversation to them becomes about penalties and other things that they have embedded in there.
Correct.
So it's a very comprehensive look that they're looking to get back to us.
Okay.
And we're not the only jurisdiction asking, there's other people asking, too.
So could you keep board members, I trust you, I said it, but all of us, I think we're all getting a question, and again, you know, I think people are trying to figure out what their future looks like, says Lisa.
Absolutely, well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I do want to ask the CEO in this public setting, I've made mention to you, Nav, personally, as recently as early last week, I believe, but I know that we're all on receipt of a number of communications from our constituents who own small business, who run small business in the unincorporated county. I would like to work closely with your office in the coming days to explore what measures we may be able to bring back to this board in terms of operating protections to small business. And I'm not gonna necessarily just limit that direction to you in terms of a similar type of lease moratorium, commercial lease moratorium. I think that would, that might be part of it, but I think we should be kind of looking more broadly at whatever's in our control as a county, that we can practically implement that protects small business in the unincorporated county. I feel strongly we have an obligation to explore that and bring it back before this board.
And that you should actually talk to the supervisors who represent the unincorporated area if you're gonna do that.
Which means everyone on this board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
7,000 compared to 270,000.
Really? Really? You're gonna do that?
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, I know, why not? Madam Clerk, would you like to read the off agenda items, please?
Okay, yes, so your board, we have four off agenda comments. The first one is from Ted Semera, who's the Executive Director of United Public Employees, and I'm paraphrasing off of the comments. "I write to you with much disappointment, frustration, and downright anger with the lack of compassion and consideration your executive 700 H Street management is giving to your employees. You have thousands of employees who are being deemed as essential employees because they are government employees, and they can be deemed so in an emergency crisis situation as we are in now. However, it is essential to keep employees regardless of age that are suffering from a chronic or underlying condition at work to be possibly exposed to this deadly disease." This is a question. "It has been brought to my attention that the county is willing to let them go home to self-quarantine, however, they will have to utilize their accrual balances if that is their choice. You have the means to place them on paid administrative leave during the self-quarantine period. Please direct your executive management team to authorize paid admin leave for all employees regardless of age who have an underlying condition to self-quarantine to help avoid getting in contact with this virus, which can jeopardize their lives." Second off agenda comment is from Matthew Bridges. "I am writing to ask that in upcoming budget discussions, you sincerely consider promoting real health and safety for all residents by diverting funding from the jail, sheriff, and district attorney, and instead make it a priority to fund our parks, public defenders, health and human services, affordable housing, youth programming, environmental justice, and equitable food systems." Third is from Jesse Cockless, who's a constituent. "A county board of supervisors to be more proactive in envisioning and funding a Sacramento that promotes the health and safety of all its residents. We demand that this board focus on reducing the jail population and stop giving a blank check to a jail that cannot even provide basic cleaning supplies in the face of an unprecedented public health crisis. COVID-19 will be accelerated by the conditions in our local jails. Do not cut the budget of the Office of the Public Defender. Stop increasing funding to the sheriff." And the final off agenda is from Cassie Frederick, Dr. Cassie Frederick. "In the face of the current public health and economic crisis, the health of our community now more than ever is depending on increased spending for the Department of Health Services, Public Health, Child, Family, and Adult Services, Human Services, Public Defender, and Regional Parks. The health of our community will not improve with increased spending for law enforcement."
Great. That concludes all of our testimony from folks for off agenda items. Supervisor Tully.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, Nav, you heard the context of some of the comments, but apparently information is out there, I don't know whether it has any basis or not, that there's already $2 million anticipated cuts to the Public Defender's Office, and that's what's in some of the communication. So again, if there's a budget update, I know you're in early formation, but we are in March, and so I would just say that that's the type of information, if you could share with us, because you gave us a broad overview within our briefings, but now information's out there, we're already getting this, I have no context to back up whether that's accurate or not, so.
Now, when we have better context, you can imagine we're trying to figure out what to do with the budget. It should come as a no surprise to anybody that monitors the county budget. We've been very clear that there's gonna be cuts coming. Year two off the J.O.A.D.A. lawsuit's gonna be implemented. Our folks are looking at a given stay-at-home, what we're doing, what we're gonna do with the budget. The numbers are out there, absolutely. We're discussing this with everybody that we have cuts coming. But I think, I appreciate the vigor that some people are saying where we should put the cuts, but we are very early in our deliberations, and you gotta also imagine with a lot of our staff at home, what kind of budget are we gonna have coming in? So all that's been contemplated, but we are at a spot to give you an update. Absolutely, we'll give you that, but there will be numbers flying out there at this point, because we are working on the budget.
Okay. Next time we come in session, I guess we have a special session called now, but it's April 7th, and so we'll be roughly two months away from budget deliberations, and again, I know you've briefed us, you know, generally, so if there are, you know, the magnitude of what's being alluded to here, so at least we've got some idea.
Yeah, Don, I would not want to put that expectation, because whatever we tell you now is gonna be subject to change. As we get close, we will know what to do with it. I give you a number right now, these are very raw numbers. It happened last year, there was departments that had numbers that we, by the time we got done, it wasn't the magnitude that was there. And I think I understand the spirit, I understand folks, there's a crisis at hand, and they want to put their agenda forward. No disrespect to them, but I do need a little bit of room to continue the budget. I will absolutely keep you guys in the loop, and I'm close to saying what to do with this budget. I don't even know what budget will look like in June at this point, given where we are. That's one part of the equation that they're looking at. We're looking at the economic impact, because if our tax receipts are not coming in, if sales tax is down, TO is down, almost everything's down for us, so the numbers are gonna change, and we are working to come up with what is the most deliberate way to a budget when most of our folks sitting at home? And what do we bring back to you? So that's what I'm looking at, but I will bring it back, and I do know that you guys are getting phone calls, we're getting calls, but to tie this to say that because of this COVID issue, that redirect budget thing, we are taking those requests, but we have to provide essential services at this point.
Okay. Right. Thanks.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we will recess to closed session.
This is Alma Munoz, Assistant Clerk for the Sacramento County Clerk of the Board's Office. I am reconvening the March 25th, 2020 Sacramento County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Item number 27 will be continued to April 7th. The item is the 2030 General Plan Annual Report for Calendar Year 2019. And again, this item will be continued to the April 7th, 2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Thank you.